Call meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Monkey.
Here.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Brown is excused. Trustee Lannon.
Here.
Trustee Lay.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
And Clerk Cody here.
Thank you. We have a decent agenda in front of us. Happy to entertain motions.
Move to approve.
Support.
Agenda.
Motion by Rogers, support by Cody. Any discussion? See none. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. Presentations. Chair Angler.
I know you've got a long agenda, but I haven't been here for a while, so.
Glad you're here.
Just real quick, I know Director Lannon there, he does a good job covering our things, but the main things I wanted to bring up is, I think finally we have the last jail. We keep on getting these little nibbets in here, so I think the last one's the last one, so. So that'll be off our plate. We pretty well went through the buyout and we just started to touch the contingency, so there's still 900 some thousand in the contingency fund. You know, people looked at, actually talked to the USDA and thought maybe we could put that towards principal, but they said, no, you've got to put it towards the tail end of it, so at 2.1, we will probably not do that, so, especially if we're looking to have to go to do a loan against the rebuild, so it just doesn't make any sense at 2.1, so if they would have been able to allow that to go towards principal, it was. We're just about, again, we're finishing up with the big tower project. So the last payment just went out, so there's probably going to, sheriffs could talk a little more on this, but there's a little bit of money left over that they're going back and work with the schools and some radio and stuff, so that money will be used up, and that's a reimbursable one, so get those two out of there. One of the things that we've been doing that I've been wanting for years, and you'll see it at every one of our, some of our meetings, is that we're doing an audit checklist, so. As you know, whenever an auditor comes in, even though auditors have always been really, really good, they always find some, some things to do in there. I think next year we'll actually have it in our quarter, the reports where there'll actually be a check seat and date that they want it completed, so that's something that we've really been working on quite hard. We're looking at the millages, and that's always a real tough thing to do, because you get people that say, well, you know, don't approve the full mill that the voters asked for. We get more and louder criticism, there's a fund balance, but you've got to kind of look into a little bit what's happening with them. Take the parks. We've been, they've been wanting to keep a little bit of money in there, because they've got the fixture annex, we're always hoping that'll come up for part of the park out there, where right now we just lease that through Fishers, half of the parks. Big part of that park, but we've been trying to buy that for years, and of course, there'll be grants available, but the grants won't cover probably what they're asking for, so they're trying to build that up a little bit, that happens. I know we had IRIIT in there, they got a little bit of a surplus in their fund balance. A lot of that money actually came through COVID, money that are in there, so this last one, they're actually going into their fund balance under this budget, so. So it's a little more comp. People always say, well, you guys shouldn't allow the full millage, but then again, do you go against the will of the voters? Because voters, I mean, if there's a, something, it's going real obvious in there, but you've got to talk to the department, or that's who are running those, to see what's actually going on, so we try to keep a pretty good tabs on everything going on, but once a millage gets put in, we have very little authority of actually what we can do besides denying part of, part of all of the millage, so. Anyways, I'll take questions, it's been a while. Yes?
You said the last, the last thing of the jail, what is the last thing?
Like, last time, they found out that the snow was getting on the sidewalks, so they had to put a fence in there to stop the snow and ice from building up in the front, so that was like a $5,500 thing. There was something that had to do with one of the soundproof deals, one of the, so just some minor things that they keep, I mean, none of it's over, I don't think any of them's been over $10,000, but it's just, you've got to fix this, you've got to do this, it's stuff they're finding out, so.
Thank you.
So, but it looks like it's the last one, so it looks like we're done, so we're actually going to sign the final forms with the USDA and finish up with Clark Construction, so that'll be done, so I'm glad to see that gone, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Frank, did the county purchase the scenario software, financial software?
We did, we did, yeah, I probably should have brought that up. We did a little bit of a run-through of it, and we're actually probably going to get into it in our planning session, but as, as you were there, when we were listening to it, it's basically a projection software, stress, you can do a lot of stress testing, but, because some of our budget items are so hard to predict, like the childcare fund, we're responsible for whatever that is, half, 50% of it, and we've had months where that costs have been $30,000 or more per child, depends if we have to take them too, yeah. So luckily, the last, our judges are really good about understanding that, so far, we've always, most of the time, the budget comes back. We always overbudget a little bit, because it's something we can't control. You know, you try to do the insurance, you know, you try to figure, because that's went up for everybody. One of the other uncontrollable ones is the benefit program, the MERS, because every time, I don't know if you guys are dealing with that, or you're not in that program, MERS?
The board used to be, but the board's no longer, but there are.
Still.
Employees, yes.
Yes, so.
They get that wrong.
They keep, that number's always a surprise, so we hope it stays down the last couple of times. Of course, they use an average, blending average on it, so two years ago, they did some really poor investments, which I don't know how they could in the market, but they did, so hopefully that'll start to come back, so. Okay?
Great, thank you. Glad to see you here again.
Yeah, it's been crazy, I don't know what it is, summer's just a busy time.
Yep.
They wanted me to go to Ottawa to talk, and I said, no, I got to go to New England, they're having it in the school gym, officer.
Oh.
Go out like, yeah.
Well, you're always welcome here. So that brings us to a public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address it public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:08 PM.
I have no one online.
Thank you. Let the record show, no one's connected remotely. Seeing no one else coming forward in person, we'll close public comment at 7:09 PM. That takes us to item nine on the agenda, report, boards and comments. Current list of boards and commissions. We have the one EDA seat, I keep trying to get that filled. And then there's an alternate on the ZBA, but what I did notice on the ZBA that's interesting is two of the seats, the term ends the end of this calendar year, and so I'll need to reach out to those two members, I think it's Liz Prunell and Rick Vars, see if they're willing to reapply. Either way, we should be looking at making sure we have that board filled. Anything else on that? Board member reports.
Nothing to report.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes, I did attend the Isabella County Committee of the whole work session, and Frank went through pretty well what went on. I just mentioned that. For, as he mentioned, four departments, I'll call them, came in front of the board and were requesting, or at least presenting, millage requests probably for the 26th budget year, and the departments were the Isabella County Commission on Aging, the Isabella County Medical Care Facility, Isabella County Parks and Recreation, and the Isabella County Transportation Commission, all came and presented before the board. And one other thing that is being looked at and considered is a information security policy to protect data information, the IT system, and then Frank filled us on many, many other things, so that was it, thanks.
Awesome, thank you. Trustee Lay?
Got nothing right now, except for we have a meeting on Wednesday, which we're finally going to get to sit down with the CRC, which is exciting, so we'll have a report next time.
It's great news to hear.
It is great news.
Treasurer Rogers?
Road Commission meets tomorrow morning, so I will also have a report in the next meeting.
And I'm glad you brought up CRC, I was just going to mention that that meeting is scheduled for next, Wednesday at 8:00 AM at Maury Courts.
Maury Courts.
Not sure we're there, but somewhere.
Yep.
If it's nice day, maybe outside. That brings us to consent agenda. Happy to entertain motions. Who had warrants?
I did, and everything appeared real good.
Motion to approve.
Supported.
Motion by Cody, support by Lay. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to our first new business item, 11 on the agenda. A, consideration of approval of a service agreement with the Woodhill Group for the provision of a finance director level support. Mr. Stuhl dryer, I'm assuming you're wanting to introduce this.
Yes, thank you. There's a report on this item, begins on page 16 of your agenda packet, as I informed you last week, as of August 8th. Finance Director Sherry Teal is no longer with the township, and so to provide for continuity of operations and to ensure pretty much immediate availability, I was in contact with a firm called the Woodhill Group. I executed a service agreement with that company under my authorities, up to $20,000. That's about 80, 80 hours of service. They were in here this past Monday, all day, with the expected duration of this agreement. I would like the Board of Trustees to consider approval. The Woodhill Group is aware that my approval is only up to $20,000. I've signed the contract, and if the board does not approve it, then I'll just simply contact them and terminate the agreement. This group was founded, formed by several retired municipal finance officers. They've gotten together and provide services to municipalities, villages, townships, cities, to provide finance office support. Some of it's at the higher level, finance director level, others is more at the operational level, bank recs and that kind of thing. On page 16, I've listed the various services that are part of this agreement. I'm not going to go through them all, but they're typically what would be associated with finance director work. This is not a fixed fee contract, it's essentially time and material. Their hourly rate, depending on the individual that's doing a particular task at any given time, their fees would range between $200 and $250 an hour. We do have funding in this fiscal year for this contract. Right now, it exists in the salary and benefits line items. If approved, we move this money over to the professional, professional services contract line item. To give you a sense of perspective, at $225 an hour, based on a 2,080-hour typical work year, we'd get about 652 hours, or one-third roughly of a full-time equivalent position during the year. I don't know the duration of the contract, I anticipate that it'll be in place for pretty much close to a year. I expect them to be with us through the hiring of a new finance director. They will not be helping in the recruitment area, but I would like them to help with review of resumes and probably be on the interview team and those kind of things. By approving this agreement, our operations will be able to continue, I think largely uninterrupted, and then I also expect, as outlined in the memo, that we'll learn some things regarding our current operations and hopefully be able to streamline some processes and continue, as we always do, to ensure that we're operating as efficiently and as effectively as possible. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this agreement. Otherwise, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve it.
I move that we approve the service agreement with the Woodhill Group for the provision of finance director level support.
Support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Cody. Discussion? All I'll add is, in a recent management team meeting, manager went into some detail, maybe a little more than he did just now, as far as giving me confidence in this transition. I think that's a good way to put it, so I'm certainly in support of it.
I met, Colleen was here Monday, and I met her. She's, she's very good to work with, and it's nice to hear some encouragement about things we can do a little bit better, like more efficiently. You'd be taking four steps when you could do it in two and a half. Oh, okay, well then let's be more efficient, so that's good.
So no more discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Anybody not clear about the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve the service agreement with the Woodhill Group, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Mr. Stuhl dryer?
Thank you.
That brings us to item B on our agenda, which is the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment, number one. Some of you may have not seen it, because it came out, I'm not sure what time today, I didn't see it till about 4:30 or so, just because that's when I was able to check my email, but Mr. Stuhl dryer, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, and we do have a report, is on your, in front of your seats this evening, it's now made part of the agenda packet that's online. This is what I call our normal kind of mid-year budget amendment. We're asking the board to consider amending the budget for the general fund, the FIRE fund, the East DDA fund, the 2% tribal fund, the sewer fund, and the water fund. I'll go through some of that detail now. In the general fund, we're looking to increase revenues by $5,100 for the delinquent personal property taxes, and $8,900 in the administrative fee line item, and both of these are largely due to increased collection activity in the personal property tax arena that we are responsible for collecting. The building permit fees are decreasing, $20,000. We're, we're look, we've been experiencing, I'll say, smaller building projects, less construction value, and fewer larger projects compared to what we thought at the beginning of the fiscal year. We are recognizing $628,000 of ARPA money that we expect to spend yet this year. We have recognized $10,000 in increased grant revenue related to election reimbursements back from the state of Michigan. We are increasing, recognizing a transfer in from the tribal 2% fund in the amount of $217,000 and some change for the McDonald Park and Jameson Park improvements, that also include a new batting cage for the Little Leagues over at McDonald Park. Total net revenue from all these adjustments is an increase of $875,000 in the general fund. The, on the expense side, throughout the budget and throughout the departments, you'll see increases in the employee health benefit expenses. We had projected a 9% increase when we developed the budget for those expenses. The renewal actually came in closer to 14%. We're also recognizing the increased township manager salary that was approved late last year after we had adopted the budget. We did increase the election department by $6,500 for the election that we had in earlier this year, May. We are increasing the legal fees for the, by $34,000. You may recall that the board approved additional payments related to the Pung matter, the assessor's defense for that court case, $29,000. We are decreasing substantially the public works department budget, $591,000. We're reducing the contributions to the road commission by $136,000. The, and that's comprised of some reduction in actual expenses for the gravel and brim contracts that were previously approved, and then we're moving to FY '26, some planning and engineering work that related to the road network north of Meyer that we've been talking about for a while, trying to get some of those dirt roads in that industrial area built up to Class A roads. We're going to be having to do more of that work next year, didn't have time this year. Sidewalks and non-motorized pathway account, which is also in the public works budget, we're decreasing that by $455,000. The $375,000 that we earmarked for the Mission Creek pathway from Pickard on up to the park is getting pushed to 2026 fiscal year, and we are also increasing the capital outlay account, $240,000 and some change. We're recognizing the final expenses for the web project, web, website redesign project, $8,500. With the influx of the tribal revenue, we're increasing the McDonald and Jameson Park upgrades, $214,000. $214,000. That's related to a change order that's later in your agenda that we are recommending approval and also to account on the expense side for the batting cage over there. Total net expenditures after all these adjustments is a decrease of $271,000 in the general fund. And so, on a, when you look at the increase in revenue, the decrease in expenses, this budget amendment will increase the projected FY '25 year-end fund balance by $1,100,000 and some change. Again, a lot of that, as I've stated, it'll flow to fund balance, but we'll also see it as part of the budget recommendation for FY '26. I think I'll stop right there and see if there's any questions on the general fund.
The public works department, you'd mentioned the pathway contribution to the city. Obviously, that's being moved because the city's not doing the project at this point until next year, I'm assuming. But the one beneath that is the $80,000 for bluegrass. Is that because we came under and what we were originally estimating on that?
I believe so, yes. That project, we, I think we've approved the contract.
We did, we did, just recently.
With the contract or a couple meetings ago.
Yep, I just didn't remember that it was.
Yeah, that came in $80,000 short of what we had budgeted.
Yeah, just was not remembering that tidbit.
I'll then move on to the FIRE fund. Again, increased revenue, $12,700 from the increased delinquent personal property tax collections. We're also recognizing increased interest earnings by $9,000. Total net revenue is an increase of $25,300 for that fund. We're reducing, on the expense side, the budget. The contract with the city of Mount Pleasant for the FIRE services was $56,000 less than what we had originally budgeted once we got that tied down for FY 2025. So the net expenditures from all these adjustments, and I'm just highlighting the large ones, is a decrease of expenses of $56,200 and some change. The net impact on the fund balance in the FIRE fund is to increase that projected year-end fund balance by $81,500, some change compared to the existing budgeted, projected year-end fund balance. Also recommending an amendment to the tribal 2% fund. We're increasing the budget in that fund by $217,750 due to the spring of, this past spring, 2% grant award that we had submitted for park improvements and the new batting cage. Also recognizing $4,500 or so for the increased interest earnings. So additional revenue into that fund, $222,000 and some change is being recognized through this budget amendment. The expenses primarily have to do with transfers out. The way we account for these 2% funds, we bring them into the 2% fund, and then we transfer the amounts out to the appropriate fund where the project or expense will actually be managed out of. So we're transferring out of this fund to the general fund, $217,000. I mentioned a minute ago in the general fund for the park improvements. And also transferring out to the water fund, $250,000. They had, I think it was maybe the fall tribal 2% application where they awarded us $250,000 for some water main extension projects. So we're increasing expenditures, primarily through the transfer to other funds, of $467,000 and some change that will decrease the projected year-end fund balance by $245,000, leaving about $40,000, maybe it's $43,000, as fund balance in the 2% fund. That's been accumulating over years, primarily due to interest earnings and some of the projects that were originally funded with 2% coming in a little less. We, at some point, with the tribe's permission, we'd be able to use that $46,000, I do believe, or $43,000, I think's remaining in that fund balance.
Can I stop you there?
Yep.
So I think you were answering what I was going to ask about this, then, is, I mean, I'm thrilled at the interest that we earn through some of the cash reserves and different funds, but I was really curious, you know, increased budget by $4,500 due to increased interest earnings. And I wasn't sure what our ability was even to do with that. And so, what I heard you just indicate.
In our ability to spend it.
Yes. Because it's, the money's coming from money that's earmarked for specific projects. And that's, what I heard you say was with tribal permission, what we can do with that essentially, right?
That's a correct statement.
Yeah, okay. So I was glad you addressed that, so thank you.
We are recommending a, an amendment to the East DDA fund. I will say that the EDA has not seen or acted on this budget amendment. Normally, they would have. They would have, at least historically, agreed with and approved the budget amendment along with a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve the budget amendment. We have not gone through that exercise with them yet. If you approve this EDA budget amendment in the, I guess, the August meeting? Or maybe September at this point?
We'll look at that. We might be teching it in August.
Okay. So we need to bring this item to the EDA. And if they do anything other than what we're recommending here, we'll circle back with you and adjust as needed. But on the EDA, we're recognizing, on the revenue side, $4,000 in increased tax captures, a little over $9,000 in additional delinquent personal property tax revenue. We are seeing state aid revenue decrease of $9,000. There's a process that we go through to try to get reimbursement for lost personal property tax. And when we completed those documents and submitted them to the state, they're paying us $9,000 less than what we originally budgeted. The other revenue is increasing by $25,000. We had a light pole on Pickard get hit in an auto accident. We had to replace it. So we did that work, and then we submitted an insurance claim, and they're paying $25,000 of that. Total net revenue from all adjustments is an increase of $29,200 in the East DDA fund. On the expense side, we're increasing the maintenance for benches and trash receptacle line item by $73,000. The EDA approved a contract. Don't recall the name of the firm, they're local. But they're, for $73,000, they're rehabilitating 29 benches and 23 trash receptacles. The board, the EDA board approved that work at their June 2025 meeting. The irrigation lighting repairs line item, that's increasing by $30,500. That's related to the expense of replacing the light pole that I mentioned a moment ago. The water system projects line item is being reduced by $500,000. The project no longer needs the support of the EDA. This was touched on a bit during a progress report meeting, presentation that we had. That division is come, that, some $10 million, $10 million, $900,000 project. We break it down into divisions, and then we start letting contracts related to each of those divisions. And one of those has come in substantially less than was originally budgeted. So we're using those funds in other divisions where we thought we needed some support from the EDA. We no longer do. So that's why that is going on. We are moving to fiscal year 2026, sidewalk pathway project on Isbell Road and Honey Bear Lane. So there's a, we're reducing that revenue, or I'm sorry, that expenditure by $125,000. We are also reducing a line item for, the EDA's going to put, install a new irrigation system along Pickard. We're moving that to FY '26. The total net reduction in expenditures is a decrease of $941,000 and some change. And that has a, that impacts on a net basis when you net out the revenue, an increase in projected year-end fund balance in the EDA fund by just under $1 million. But almost all of that will be budgeted again in FY 2026. Any questions in that fund? If not, I'll move to the sewer fund. We are increasing revenue by $94,200 in the sewer fund. Expenditures, you'll see reductions in the two departments there of totaling $17,700 related to that healthcare insurance increase. Property liability insurance, the sewer fund pays a portion of that. That's increasing by $5,000. We're increasing the depreciation line item in this fund, $25,000. On a net basis, all the expenses are increasing by $47,200. The impact on the bottom line or the fund balance in that fund is to increase projected year-end fund balance by just under $47,000 compared to the existing projected fund balance. On the water fund, you'll see in the revenues that we are, and this was probably a mistake just made at the, when the budget was originally adopted, we're moving $5,778,000 from the state grant line item to the federal grant line item because it is sourced as federal money, even though it flows through the state. We're reducing, as I mentioned, in the EDA fund, $500,000 out of the water fund for the water main project that we no longer need because we're able to use part of the grant funding for that. Leases for cell phone companies, they pay rent. To the township, they have antennas on top of a couple of our water towers. That's increasing by $4,500. We're increasing the gain slash sale of asset line item, recognizing $10,000 for the trade-in to older Chevy pickup trucks when we, at the time, we purchased two new ones that you all had approved earlier this year. And we're, of course, recognizing the transfer in from the 2% fund, $250,000. So total net revenue from all the adjustments is a, is a decrease of $235,500. The total net, on the expense side, I'm sorry, you'll again see Blue Cross Blue Shield rates, insurance line item increasing, the property liability insurance increasing. We have a meter replacement program line item. We're increasing that by $10,000. We have more activity in the meter replacement arena. And then we're also decreasing by $420,000 a capital projects line item in the water fund related to how we're moving around some of the funding between the divisions of that $10 million, $900,000 project. The net impact of all of that on the bottom line in the water fund is to increase projected year-end fund balance by about $150,000, a little bit more. $150, almost $150,000. There's additional detail, there's line item detail behind the memo. My comments here were at even more of a summary level than the memo. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then, at the end of the day, we're asking the board to approve these budget amendments via a resolution to amend FY 2025 budgets for the general fund, FIRE fund, tribal 2%, East DDA fund, and then the sewer and water funds, respectively. Happy to answer any questions. I do apologize for this not getting into the agenda packet last Thursday. But life happened, and we weren't able to get it done. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment, number one, for the general fund, FIRE fund, East DDA fund, tribal 2% fund, sewer fund, and water fund. It should be noted that the EDA board will review the budget amendment for the East DDA fund at their meeting on August 19, 2025. Any changes to the budget amendment that they recommend will be brought back to the Board of Trustees at a later date.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Thering. Other discussion? I know there was some concern that we didn't have a lot of time to look at this much prior to this meeting, but so I just want to make sure people are comfortable. I mean, we've got a pretty detailed presentation.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody not understand the motion? Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board regarding the budget amendment?
Supervisor Monkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Lanning?
Yes.
All yeses.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to item C on the agenda, introduction and first reading for proposed new blight control ordinance. I'm actually kind of excited to be dealing with this. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have something you'd like to introduce on this?
Yes, thank you. There is a report that begins on page 48 of your agenda packet. So what we're talking about, you know, for local governments, blight, we're typically referring to the accumulation of trash and junk materials, abandoned vehicles, boats, campers, those kinds of things. Buildings that have fallen into disrepair, vacant, unsecured, no longer habitable. As these conditions. know, as these conditions exist and if they're not addressed, increase in their volume and in their impact, they can create fire hazards and health hazards, they can damage the appearance of neighborhoods, the business community, they can adversely impact property values. And they're just not, you know, we don't like blight. Currently, we don't have a blight ordinance per se, but we do have a couple of ordinances and several sections within, say, the zoning ordinance that deal with blight. We have a tall grass ordinance, we have certain ordinances and certain sections in the zoning ordinance that address things like abandoned buildings and things that you might consider blight. But this ordinance, if we adopt it, is, it's more comprehensive in nature, it's a police power ordinance, it's, I think it'll give us, you know, meaningful additional tools that we can avail ourselves to, to address blight. Blight's a, and odd duck, so to speak. One person's blight might be another person's treasure. One person's yard art might be considered another person's blight. So we have to, you know, navigate those kinds of issues. You get into graffiti and if it's on private property and if it's on a vehicle, you know, you get into the same kind of arguments, is it protected by the First Amendment and all these things? And these are all real. So we think by creating a single ordinance that'll just give us some additional authorities to address blight that may exist or may, you know, exist into the future. This ordinance has been drafted with the assistance of the township attorney. So we're asking the board to consider a first reading and introduction tonight. If you do that, then a second reading and a request for adoption would be brought forward at your next board meeting. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance and most of those I will probably ask Mr. Nanny to address.
Well, I know I have some, but it may take me a minute to get back to my notes here on this. Anybody else have questions? I just wanted to ask for, make sure I'm understanding some of the codes being to storage of boats, trailers, those kinds of things. In particular, I found it interesting that the semi trailer was in here, which I think is a good thing, because very often we see those used as a sign. They just park the trailer in a field and use it as advertising. I'm assuming that can address that type of situation?
Yes, it can. And I've also seen cases where they've been used for essentially a storage.
Storage, yeah, right. What I wasn't clear on in some of these, let's see if I can find, I think this was in section four, item one, when I read it originally. But I guess, I just want to make sure, we're talking about these different devices, recreational vehicles, trailers. I didn't see specific exclusions for like a ATV dealer. And I know that's not what it's intended to go after, but I was looking for the way that I knew that wasn't counted as blight because we're talking about storage of vehicles. I don't know if my questions make any sense, I just...
There's a, there is a, if you may.
Go ahead.
Actually, the first paragraph of section four, it has an important exception right there, second line.
That's exactly what I was looking for.
Yeah.
And when I read it, I didn't see it because I thought, except allowed by zoning ordinance, is what I figured we needed, and it's there, so I missed it.
For example, a junkyard can have wrecked vehicles if it's completely lawful activity. ATV dealer can have unlicensed ATVs parked in their lot and it's completely lawful activity.
Thank you. And I'd read it a couple of times and I'm like, I'm not seeing it, but it's real clear now. It's exactly what I was looking for.
And those semi trailers that are used for storage, I mean, they sell them for that purpose, they're...
Yeah, there are certainly zoning districts where outdoor storage is completely lawful. In those cases, it's a non-issue. So this is only in cases where, where outdoor storage is not a lawful land use under the zoning ordinance, so therefore it's not covered by that exception.
Okay.
And to be clear, those are like this shipping container type jobbies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do just want to say, the reason I was kind of excited to see this is twofold, I guess. One is, and you notice the manager just shared out the surveys that were done in the past of our residents, and one of the top concerns, at least in one of those, was blight. And so we struggled with that, and we've had incidents in the past where we weren't able to address something. And knowing our township, we don't use these to abuse the public by any means, but it allows to give, it gives us a tool to be able to deal with some blight conditions that we struggled dealing with in the past. And so that's where my excitement is, because I hate telling someone that calls me that complains about a neighbor or unkept property that there's nothing we can do when it's clearly not a healthy environment for our township. So anyways. Clerk Cody?
I didn't really have time to look over this completely, and I wanted to review it, like, but are you still going to be able to, like, have an extra car on the side? No? Not anymore?
So the zoning ordinance currently allows two unlicensed vehicles to be parked basically in the backyard. This would not remove that standard in the zoning ordinance. That's something that we'll look at, but, but even in this case, for item one, as you see there, the standard is that you cannot keep an unlicensed or junk or vehicle on premises for more than 15 calendar days. So for 15 calendar days, you can be working on your car, in your driveway, or your yard, or whatever you need to do. So the idea is to give plenty of time to be able to make a major repair, if you need to make a major repair in your driveway, and then, and then take care of the vehicle from there. So this gives that big exception. And frankly, even in cases where, where we have to do enforcement, our first action is a notice, which would also give additional time. So they really will have more than enough time to do anything they need to do in terms of actually repairing a vehicle that may have gotten into an inoperable condition.
I don't know if 15 days is enough for that, but I'm just saying. What, okay, so here's an instance. Say somebody left their car there. You have to apply for an abandoned title, blah, 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 in order to get it removed off your property. So can you, like, give you evidence saying, hey, I'm trying to get this, and then, because why would you have to pay another fee? You know, that's just one instance that...
That's a great question. The, as I said, the first step we always take in ordinance enforcement is to notice violation. Under our municipal enforcement bureau ordinance, that first notice is usually 30 days for things that are not a health and safety issue. An inoperable vehicle is not a urgent health and safety issue, simply a visual blight. So they're going to have, they're going to have plenty of time to be able to act. But also, our goal in ordinance enforcement is always to resolve the problem. It's not to issue tickets, we don't want to issue tickets. We don't want to take anybody to court, we want to resolve the problem. So in a case like you described, we recognize, because we had a case on a property the township bought that had an abandoned vehicle on it, I know exactly how hard it is to get rid of that vehicle.
Yeah.
Our goal is always to correct the problem. So we work with, with people to correct it. You've seen in, in our month of reports, sometimes items are on those reports for several months at least, as we're working with people to get that property back into compliance. It would be no different with this ordinance.
Yeah, I think to paraphrase, as long as they're working towards resolution, township tries to work with them.
Absolutely.
So I found it interesting, some of the language regarding the construction materials. I'm trying to remember where this was exactly. But it even listed, I think nails, yeah, nails, screws. I can't imagine that anybody, one, would ever complain if they had a box of screws sitting on the side of their house. But it's intended to really encapsulate this, the construction materials, right?
That's correct, yes.
So some of the issues we've had in the past were described earlier. I think you put it as somebody's junk is somebody else's treasure. I'm paraphrasing, but, so that First Amendment issue, where someone may have something in their lawn that they think is lawn art, but the neighbors find it offensive. Offensive because it's blight, not, I'm not talking vulgar necessarily.
Right.
How, this can't really correct that, can it? Or is there some goals to be able to try to address that in this?
My favorite example is the person that uses an old toilet and turns it into a flower planter.
Right.
Well, if they do that, it's a flower planter. If it's maintained neatly, it's still a flower planter. If it is a toilet sitting on the yard, knocked over from the side, broken, whatever, then it's junk, it's garbage. So in any ordinance enforcement case, there, there has to be some judgment made as what we're dealing with here. And, and as I said, our goal is always to just bring the property back into compliance. However, we work when people do that, and sometimes when we find out that that toilet is not a toilet, but actually is a flower planter, and they're maintaining it that way, then we will move on from that, even if a neighbor may not be happy that that's a flower planter.
Yeah. Thanks. I expected that answer, but I wanted to ask it in public. Other questions? Is this board inclined to conduct a first hearing?
It says unlicensed, like, so you can have, like, your boat sitting next to your house, but like, you're not going to use it in the winter, then what if you don't have a garage big enough to store your boat in?
Boats are licensed.
Even the little boaters? I don't know, I never had a boat.
Yeah, there's Michigan registration, sure.
I don't know, I was thinking of one of those little aluminum boats. Or kayaks or whatever, I don't know.
Well, those should be too, otherwise DNR might get them on the lake.
Kayaks too?
No, not those. I don't, I've never seen a license on a kayak. Doesn't mean they're not.
Registration?
Yeah. We're also getting to an element here that is another one that is an interesting one that comes up, and that is children's toys, that kayak, aluminum fishing boat, all are sort of in that space of household items. And we have occasioning recent complaints because the neighbor's kids have sprayed their toys across the yard and didn't clean them up. And that's not blight, that's household items that are, we're not, we're not going to deal with that under this ordinance. An aluminum boat, if it doesn't require license, it's in good condition, then it's not blight. If it's crushed in some way or rusted through, then probably is going to be considered blight. But items that are simply out does not constitute blight on their own.
Okay. So it sounds like the deciding factor is the condition of the item that is left, or if it's being used regularly, or if it's just sitting there for an extended period of time.
I lost the page because my computer died. I moved to introduce and conduct the first reading of the proposed new blight control ordinance.
Support?
Motion by Rogers, support by Thering. Any further discussion? We will see this again, assuming we choose to.
Okay. It's a nice.
It appeared to me to be reasonable, and a tool of that should be on the books as an ordinance for the township to utilize.
I think the things I always look for is the unexpected or unintended consequences, and that's always hard and, but I'm sure that as this gets in, put into effect, if it gets there, that we'll certainly learn if there are modifications we need to make as well.
I think it's a great idea, I just had some questions.
Yes, I'm excited. Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to conduct first reading. Would you do a roll call of the board on this, please?
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Trustee Lanning?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Or Treasurer Rogers, I am so sorry. I was on the trustee.
Was that unanimous?
And then Clerk Cody, yes. Now it is. Sorry.
Thank you. First reading conducted. Anything else on this before we move on? That takes us to our last new business item, item D on the agenda, 11D, 2025 Parks Improvement Project, Isabella Corporation, change order number one. Mr. Stuldryer?
Thank you. There's a report, begins on page 57 of your agenda packet. You may recall that in November of 2024, the board approved a contract with the Isabella Corp. in the amount of 305,000 dollars to do various improvements to both McDonald and Jameson Park. That was brought to you as a result of staff and, I believe Gordy Frazier, going through both McDonald and Jameson Park and coming up with a list of items that, that we wanted to, a list of improvements to the park. Some of them were in the nature of the parking lot, some of them were replacing pathways. When that list was generated and then subsequently put out the bid, the bids came back in the 600,000 dollar range. And so before this was brought to the board, the staff went through and eliminated a lot of items, and that brought us to the point where we could take to the board the contract that you approved in November of 2024 in the amount of 305,000 dollars. And then, since then, in, in the spring of 2025, as part of the 2% grant application and award process, we were awarded 200,000 dollars from the tribal 2% grant program that I've kind of touched on a little bit in this budget amendment process. And in May then, we found out we were indeed awarded the grant request. So now we're coming back to the board since we have additional funding to ask for a change order to the original contract to do more of those items that were additionally, initially identified in our original survey. So that's the basis of this change order. This change order will allow us to reconstruct all the remaining parking lots in McDonald Park. The first contract, we weren't able to do all of them. This now, if approved, will allow us to do all of them. Same with the walking trails in McDonald Park. We'll also be removing the wood walking bridge and replacing it with a, with a new structure. The construction is expected to commence in the fall of 2025, now that we have... The construction is expected to commence in the fall of 2025, now that we have all our funding and we can expand the project if, if approved by the board. The funding at the end of the day, so to speak, is ARPA funding of three hundred and five thousand dollars, which exists in the general fund. Um, and then a two percent grant award of two hundred thousand dollars. So we have funding now of five hundred and five thousand dollars. And then on the expense side, uh, we had contracted with Gordy Frazier for some of the design and, uh, the original surveying work, fifteen thousand dollars and some change. The McDonald's Park piece of this, uh, project, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in improvements. Jameson Park, twenty-six thousand dollars, almost, uh, yeah, just a little over twenty-six thousand dollars in improvements. There'll be a contingency within this project budget of a little over eight thousand dollars. You add all that up, and we have construction costs, including contingencies totaling five hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, so we're asking the board to, uh, consider approving this change order. And there's additional detail, um, in your packets and maps. Um, but this sources back to an initial effort back in the fall of November, fall of 2024. We moved on it, and then, uh, due to some, uh, positive changes, we're able to increase the improvements that we're trying to make. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Uh, and then ultimately asking for you to consider approving the change order in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, dollars and some change. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. A hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars is the amount of the change order.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number one with the Isabella Corporation in the amount of one thousand, or one thousand, a hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred of the completion of the parks improvement project at McDonald's Park and Jameson Park, and authorize township manager to sign the change order.
Support?
Motion by Cody, support by Rogers. Uh, discussion? You may have said this, but I'll just add it for public information. Um, all the items in the change order really are, um, maintenance issues. None of them are new features to this park. Uh, really is just the parking lots, the sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's not something new with the park, despite the fact that, um, a lot has been invested into McDonald's Park if we approve this.
Yeah, the community takes great pride, pride in our parks, as does the elected officials and the staff. And to keep these parks looking in the shape they're in, they require continued maintenance. And, uh, uh, when we do have opportunities to add, uh, assets to the park, like the fitness center, we, we do that. Um, but if you want them nice, they need to be maintained.
Yeah, I just wanted to articulate that this is largely a maintenance, uh, refurbishing, essentially, of what's there.
And I, I know we have our new website, and, um, I ask about before pictures and after pictures. That might be kind of cool to have on there to, you know.
That would be nice.
Like it.
Yeah.
Farmer Director Smith will be the project manager on this. Uh, we'll leave that, I think, to her.
Oh.
Because some of it's maintenance. I don't know if the, I'm sure we can find some before and after pictures, but, you know.
Like, even with the drone, you know, kind of that kind of, you know, walkways and that kind of stuff. Parking lot look like this now that parking lot looks like this. Yeah.
Yep. Well, we'll see when we can do that area. We don't own a drone, but we know people to do.
Yeah, there you go.
I like the fact that this couldn't be done in one project.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, um, the setup for paving part of a parking lot, then dispersment of the equipment, and staging again to do another part. It's nice that this will all come together at one point in time. So, really good.
Good point.
We still got a vote on it, I think, don't we?
Thank you. I was just clarifying. I wanted to make sure we had a motion and imagine it. Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Anybody not clear on the motion? Uh, all in favor of approving the change order number one with the Isabella Corporation in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars for McDonald's Park project, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I should have added Jameson Park to that motion note. That finishes our new business. Uh, takes us to item twelve on the agenda, uh, extended public comment, which is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we will open up extended public comment at eight eleven PM.
No one's online.
With the record note that nobody's connected remotely. Uh, those that are in attendance here are indicating, uh, no desire to get up, so we'll close extended public comment at eight eleven PM. Uh, item thirteen on our agenda, managers' comments. Mr. Stuldryer.
Thank you, and I just have a few. Before I, before I make this first one, I just want to confirm because it's been a couple of weeks now. Um, the, the skilled operator position, is that still open?
We have reposted it.
Okay. So I did want to announce that we do have an opening in the skilled operator. Uh, it's a skilled operator position, operating heavy equipment. Um, we had had a posting, didn't get maybe any applications, or certainly none that we could look at. So it's been posted again, so I just wanted to mention it here in case any of you know, or the public knows, uh, that we do have this position open. Um, and then also a reminder that on September twenty-seventh, now it's a bit away, bit, bit away as yet, but from eight to eleven is our cleanup day. And we are looking for volunteers to help with that. Sometimes the board, uh, likes to come and help, and anything we can do, any, any, any bodies we can get just makes it easier for everybody. In the past, we have had about four folks from MMI helping us, and they won't be, um, able to help this year. So we think we're going to be in pretty good shape, but again, anybody, uh, who wants to help, come on out.
What was that read again?
Yeah.
Nine twenty-seven, Saturday, from eight to eleven. And then my last comment, uh, I'd mentioned that Sherri Teal is no longer with us, uh, but I do want to publicly thank her for her work. She worked here fourteen, over fourteen years. And, uh, during her tenure, tenure here, she did do a lot of good work. The books, when she arrived fourteen years ago, were not in very good shape, and now they are. And I just wanted to publicly thank her for those, uh, efforts. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Final board member comment? Trustee Lannan?
No comments.
Trustee.
I'm just putting that date on my calendar. No, I've got nothing.
Uh, Trustee Thering, I'm skipping you on purpose for a minute. Trustee Thering?
Thank you.
Trust, Clerk Cody? Treasurer Rogers?
Okay. I do have something. When I was running for office, for this office, I talked to lots of residents and asked if they had any concerns with the union township, or if they thought anything that could be improved. And I made a list, and there's, I didn't count between ten, fifteen, twenty things on the list. And I didn't come in here and throw the list at anybody. I just, I've got to get in here and see how everything works and get to know people. Well, I recently brought the list to the management team, and so it's a list of concerns slash issues. Well, if it's really an issue, if anything on that list is really an issue, how can we make that better? And if it's not an issue, how do we communicate to our residents why it is this way? So then they understand and they're not irritated by it. So that's where we are. And we started having, we've had one meeting already to talk about a couple of things, so I look forward to working through all that. Thank you.
As Treasurer Rogers mentioned, um, she brought this to a management team meeting, and, uh, I, I really liked the list. I mean, to be honest, as I read through the list, these are all things I've heard before, largely. I'm
Right.
Generalizing here. Uh, largely heard these things before, uh, many of which I think I could give a reasonable answer to, to, if someone asked me about it. Um, but there were some on there that I'm not sure why things are the way they are, or, uh, couldn't answer them all in an intelligent, intelligent, um, proper way. And so I thought I, this is something that I could learn from. And as I thought about that more, uh, I approached Treasurer Rogers, and I said, what if we opened this up to more of the board members to contribute things that you've heard? Because all these things that we hear, um, whether valid, whether true or not, their perception, right? Um, and I think it would be very educational for all of us to know the answers to some of those concerns that we may not know now. So I thought it would be a, a constructive exercise for all of us to go through some of those and make sure we understand some of the history that's behind some of these things, and what's, what's, what is the truth in some of these areas? And so, uh, we talked about that in the management team meeting yesterday, 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 uh, some. And I wanted to see if there's interest from this board to do that. Um, I want it to be a constructive thing. Um, so I'm asking now.
Yes.
Yes.
Useful? So what I would ask then is that our treasurer send out the list that you've compiled.
Yep.
Um, and actually, the managers kind of organized it.
Yes, I'll send that one out too.
Okay. Uh, it is organized kind of by department?
Yes.
Way to put it? Okay. Um, but what I thought would be helpful is if there are things that you've all heard that maybe are misconceptions, or you don't know the answers to, that you hear from our residents or businesses, uh, maybe let's add to that list, and we'll begin trying to knock some of those off and understand those better, not just for us, but, um, for the public as well.
To improve the relationship between us and our residents.
I like the idea of having an answer to some of them that can be answered.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
And it's something that maybe we'll see your list in the next few weeks, or?
A few days.
Few days, perfect.
So, um, let's maybe, you know, try in the next two to three weeks to put your comments in there.
Mm-hmm.
We, we can always add to it. I mean, my, my hope, as I've thought about this more, is, um, there may be things in the future that, um, we might be able to do this again in a year with two or three items that have come up. I don't know. We'll see. We'll, we'll see how, uh, constructive this exercise is. I, I anticipate it will be constructive. And then just the other note, so you'll send that out?
Yes.
And then we'll, um, just add to the, to the list. Um, we'll compile it all together. And, and to be honest, if I, as I look through the list, there probably aren't many that I would be adding to it because they're, those are the things I hear. Um, and the fact that we hear similar things
Right. Yeah.
Means these need to be spoken to one way or another.
Right.
And I, and I think a lot of it is just not, our residents not, uh, having the information. So.
Even if there was a handful of things that we have the answer to, it's a uniform, correct answer.
Right.
It's not
Right.
You giving an answer, and yours is a little bit to the left, and mine's a little bit to the right, and Tim's
Right.
High, and
Yeah.
Her hand is a little low. I mean, it's, it's something that we all understand to be because that's what it is, so.
Yeah. Did you have something on this?
I just want, make sure I'm clear. The, uh, I, I think in the main, what I'm hearing is this is, uh, primarily an information sharing exercise. Um, and I've seen the list too, and many of the items, you know, they're common, and we've spoke to them in the past, and this would be another opportunity to, uh, speak to them. I could imagine that, um, some of them could be answered in a memo to the board. Others, uh, which would end up in an agenda packet and in the minutes and posted therefore. Um, others may be a little bit more involved, and it might take, uh, something more like a presentation. That might be too strong of a word.
Right.
What I, and then some of them are, yeah, we all want this, but it just costs a lot of money. And no matter whether, you know, it would cost so much money that the, if the board wanted to pursue it, they'd begin to talk about, uh, increasing taxes to do it. Um, so that's kind of the framework I'm looking at this from. Um, I don't want it to, you know, all of you are, are elected, all of you, uh, listen to constituents, eleven thousand of them, depending on how you count. Um, and I know y'all, uh, when you're out campaigning, you make your promises. Uh, so I just want to make sure the administration is, is in the space of information sharing. Uh, and we may not have all the information for some of these items. Some of them are historical, and there may be people on this board to know more than we did about some of these items. So I'd also ask for your, uh, participation in this exercise.
Yeah. I, I think the way you described it is very much how I'm picturing, yeah.
There's been more than one occasion where I've come in and asked to speak with Manager Stuldryer or Mr. Nanny, where I'm not understanding something, and I, it is explained to me so that I can go out and better explain. Just that alone, you know, some I'm sure would be fairly simple, and some may not be. And it may be best that we don't, we send them to the correct people rather than us getting involved. So, um, some. But man, if there's a handful that we can knock out and make it a lot easier for everyone, anything's better than nothing.
Right. A good example of, um, one that was on the list had to do with hard water. Um, and I don't know, especially for new board members, if you're aware that the township and the city actually looked jointly together years ago, and I think it was about twenty nineteen, um, at sharing or partnering in the water treatment, uh, softening, uh, using the city's facilities. And the cost on that was exorbitant. And the board at that time decided not to pursue that because, as Mr. Stuldryer just mentioned, uh, the increase in service costs that we would have to do was not something the board was willing to pass on to our residents at that time. Doesn't mean it won't ever happen. Um, but that, that's an example of one of the questions. Uh, but sometimes it's good to know, learn as much history as we can on that, some of that, that, yeah. All right, so we'll look forward to that going out then.
Is it going to be like a shared document, or how's, what's the form, or is it just the email?
Basically, I, my list was not in, in order, and then Manager Stuldryer put it in department, so the, all the items are in base, now organized by department.
Would you be willing to collect, if, if people send you things they would like to add?
Absolutely.
Would you add them to yours?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would that be okay?
Yep.
How's that?
Okay.
Is that clear? So if you have something you want to add, send it to the treasurer, and
Yep.
She'll add it to her document, or I guess
Yep.
Joint document now?
The master document.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, anything else for the good order? With that, our business is concluded. We'll, uh, conclude the meeting at eight twenty-four PM.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.